June Board Workshop meeting date?
Yep, that'll work.
Any other suggestions or modifications of the agenda?
Was that suggestion to change the date of the June Board meeting to be able to validate the election?
Well, yeah, we want to, we want to talk about the dates for the June Board meetings. So we, we want to add a, a time on the agenda to discuss them. That's one of the reasons Danny.
Yeah, we have to certify the election or you have to certify the election. And there's not enough time by your June 7th Board meeting date with the June 2nd election date.
So the added agenda item would be a discussion of, of June Board meeting dates. Are there any other questions or comments or suggested modifications of the agenda? If not, the Chair would make a motion, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as modified. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote. Let's see, Lynn, we're still waiting.
It's not letting me join the meeting. What happened? Come on. Log out, log back in.
No pressure Lynn, no pressure.
I probably made that motion way more complicated than it needed to be.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda. 5.0, old business, 5.1, resolution calling an election on whether the district should issue fourteen million, one hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds for the purpose of constructing, improving, renovating, finishing, and equipping school facilities. Dr. Schutz, Mr. Kruger?
Wayne has done a lot of legwork on both of these questions, especially as it relates to your request to revise the second question. So I'm going to turn this over to him to get our discussion started.
Thank you, Dr. Schutz. So 5.1 is a resolution calling for basically issuance of fourteen point one million dollars in general obligation bonds. This is the exact same language and recommendation that you had at the April 15th meeting. With the exception, if you actually look at the, uh, the, the resolution, uh, item number seven, section seven of that resolution actually rescends or repeals any conflicting, uh, action taken by the Board after April 15th meeting, making this particular resolution in effect. Based on the council that we received, uh, last month, you approved the language. This is approving the language and basically authorizing the administration to, to send this to the election board. So that's what you have before you tonight. Uh, to, to make sure that we don't have anything in conflict with the April 15th action. Uh, we're recommending this be adopted tonight. And again, this, um, is not only approving the language, but authorizing administration to send this to the election, uh, board for consideration on August 4th. And I'll answer any questions that you have.
Hey Wayne, I know I've asked you the question on this. Uh, but just to avoid the confusion, uh, some of the communications and stuff that are going out and it's showing fifteen plus million dollars.
Yep.
Elaborating on that a little bit.
Yep. So right now, based on the state statute regarding the 15% cap on, on, uh, bond capacity, based on our total assessed valuation, right now, we only have a ceiling of fourteen point one million dollars available at this time. It's believed by all parties involved that when we issue these bonds, we'll be able to sell these bonds at what they call a premium. And as a result, uh, because of our high credit rating, uh, we will likely have in excess of fifteen point five million dollars to construct. But per the, per the language and the letter of the law, we can only ask for fourteen point one. Uh, but because we'll be able to sell these at a premium because of our high rating, we anticipate and we're planning for fifteen point five worth of work. There is a possibility, while it'd be very remote in my opinion, that we would not be able to sell our bonds for a premium, uh, and therefore only be able to generate the fourteen point one. But, but that's never been the case, uh, in any bond, general bond issuance, not only in Smithville, but actually across the entire state of Missouri. Missouri bonds, Missouri has a very high bond rating as a state. And, and then our district has a high rating, the bonds are always sold at premium and they always generate more than the request.
So there isn't any reflection of the current market? Uh, the way that it's fluctuating, it might affect that either?
No, no, not based on what the council is recommending, no. If, if anything, it could generate potentially a higher premium because they are a stable investment. Investors will be looking for places that are stable to put, uh, put their money versus taking chances. And so this may even yield a higher premium as a result. We've talked to the election, excuse me, we've talked to the election authorities and, uh, by all accounts, uh, not only they're anticipating the, the June election being, uh, scheduled as, uh, per the calendar, but they see absolutely no reason at this time that the August will not happen on the scheduled date.
Wayne, I have a question on the debt schedule table that you distributed. That the table shows, uh, the assessed value growth rate in the second column.
Correct, a 3%.
3%. And the question I have to ask is, when I look back to what happened in the 08, 09, uh, recession, that we went five years with almost, uh, well, on the average of 0.24% assessed valuation increase. Some, basically was flat for five years. If we would take this flat for, let's say, 2021 to 2025, how would that affect our ability to, uh, to make bond payments?
It wouldn't, it would not affect our ability to make the bond payments. What it would do is affect our bond capacity to borrow any additional funds. Statutorily, we are setting the levy at a rate to be, to always be able to make those payments. So it's, it's firstly, there's no risk, uh, with the payments and the issuance that's, that has occurred. What it would do is impede our ability to borrow in the future.
So in other words, this would not affect our nearby ability to borrow, but it might affect our ability to borrow for the second phase or the third phase.
Correct, correct. And, and while it's not reflected here, you know, there are some potential commercial developments that are out there, that have some momentum, that will have a significant, uh, impact on our, on our assessed valuation. So I'm not, um, at all concerned about that number.
Okay. Have we gotten any feedback from patrons, uh, citizens of the community about this, uh, going forward on this?
No. Um, and if you watch the video where I went through, um, the proposals, I, I received zero feedback from the public on that. You know, if that's any indication, it should be a pretty smooth campaign. Um, although that's really the only formal effort, um, to, to date that we've, you know, tried to begin this education process. But, uh, if that was, you know, floating it out there, um, there, there was no negative feedback from that.
Are you referring to the Thursday afternoon update that you gave?
Well, that's, that's to the staff on Thursday afternoons. I'm referring to a Tuesday evening, uh, family update. Uh, I believe it was the evening that I interviewed the two students. Uh, and then after that, I went into a discussion on, uh, the potential, uh, projects.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell on my mom here real quick. I asked her because I knew she had been watching those. If she heard the discussion on the project and she said she turned you off after, after the discussion with the students. So I don't know how many people actually heard it.
Well, it probably would, um, you know, you don't just say that kind of message once. So, um, probably need to work it in several times, but it won't be our only effort either, of course, to try to get people engaged in what could be coming here. We, um, and I'll take this moment, we, um, remind the Board, we, we have been in conversation with Axiom Strategies. Uh, they helped us with the 2016 campaign. Um, limited assistance, uh, this go around at limited expense. Um, basically, uh, designing and, and helping us with our mailers and the cost for that is extremely low. Allowing us to utilize those graphics for our social media. Uh, and it looks like this go around will be similar to the last go around where they just kind of throw in some things. Um, like he wanted to, to get some feedback from the public on some branding ideas for the campaign. So he was wanting to kind of test the market a little bit on, uh, some branding ideas. So I do have a letter of agreement. Um, I don't have it before you tonight. Uh, again, the cost is very minimal, but you'll get your hands on that, uh, shortly.
Any other questions or comments on this? Well, there's a lot of uncertainty in our lives and in economy the next few months. But I would say for us not to go forward means we're not giving the opportunity to at least see what, get some clarity in the future and to not give our patrons an ability to make a decision. So it would seem to me a logical choice to move ahead. Also in this, uh, trying to, uh, spur the economy, nothing, not, I shouldn't say nothing, but a infrastructure project, a building project could help considerably in terms of helping improve the economy. If there are no further questions or comments, then the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Hey Russell, just to clarify, had we not already approved the resolution, we just hadn't agreed to send it to, so are we approving it again or are we just voting to send it to the election board? Because this one was already approved. If I remember right, we, we held off on the second one. But I thought, I thought we'd approved the language for this one.
Well, you are correct, except Wayne did point out that there is an added clause in these resolutions, item seven, which, uh, which supersedes any language we may have had in April 14th, April 15th. So that, uh, as we go forward with this resolution, it's very clear that, as I interpret what Wayne is saying, it's very clear that there is no conflict with prior resolutions and this is a resolution that we wish to go forward.
Okay.
Correct.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve a resolution calling for an election on whether the district should issue one fourteen million, one hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds for the purpose of constructing, improving, renovating, finishing, and equipping school facilities. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion carried, seven zero. Uh, next item would be 5.2. Resolution calling an election on whether the district should increase its operating tax levy ceiling by 10 cents per one hundred dollars of, of assessed valuation to provide funds for the purpose of paying general operating expenses for the district. And Dr. Schutz, Mr. Kruger?
Yes, based on the comments, uh, of, of the April 15th meeting, we took this language and, uh, went back to the bond council and the bond council, um, reviewed this and actually contacted, uh, the state, uh, Attorney General's office and, uh, had a question, uh, back and forth or dialogue back and forth about this. And they have reworked this, uh, while it'd be very minimal. Uh, in other words, they took out a to and added an of and changed the sequencing of, of words and so on and so forth, but, uh, they believe this is, uh, as close or, uh, as to what you want as they can legally, uh, get. Basically what this does is authorizes voters to increase the operating levy 10 cents. Uh, in doing so, uh, it is transferring 10 cents from the Fund III to Fund I. Uh, at the end of the day, the overall tax levy will be the same, uh, which will be five dollars and 10 cents based on the current tax rate. That 10 cents will generate approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of operational funds which can be used for, uh, technology, uh, supplies, salaries, uh, et cetera. There is no sunset.
Have we received any feedback from our, our public on this one?
I have not.
I am curious.
No, I was just gonna say I have not, uh, much like the other question, I rolled them out at the same time. I have not.
I understand this is highly vetted by lawyers who, uh, spend a lot of money, buy, uh, our money, uh, by the word. But I'm curious, it says, and the district expects to make a corresponding reduction of its debt surface property tax levy. Says expects and not is required to make. Would a patron feel concerned that, well, we expect to do it, but we're not mandated to do that? I know this is our attention, this is what we're gonna be doing, maybe I'm just splitting hairs, but, uh, expectation and mandation are two different things.
Correct, and, and, and I agree with that. I will say that, uh, you know, they base this on the current levy. It, it's, it's very likely, uh, that we'll have to roll our overall levy back if, if we have more than, uh, consumer price index increases of 2.3% anyways. So while our rep levy is five dollars and 10 cents this year, and again, it references that our current operating levy is 3.9465. That's why it says expects because likely because of the Hancock Amendment, those won't be the numbers, but the 10 cents will be the number, if that makes sense. It, you can't really go into a big dissertation about the Hancock Amendment in this where people would just get lost.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from Board members?
And I will say that, um, for clarity and transparency, these two questions are independent of each other. It's not, they both have to pass, uh, or one passes and one doesn't, we still won't be able to do the other, if that makes sense. Uh, we would prefer them both to pass. But, but they're, they're not, uh, symbiotic to each other.
Hearing no other questions or comments, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make a motion approving the resolution calling for an election on whether the district should increase its operating tax levy ceiling by 10 cents per 100 of assessed valuation to provide funds for the purpose of paying general operation, operating expenses for the district.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carried, seven zero. Uh, next item, 6.1 Personnel Recommendations.
Yeah, you have the Personnel Recommendations before you and we recommend that you approve them.
Make a motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations in, uh, item 6.1 is presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Personnel Recommendations as indicated in 6.1 of our Board package. Any further questions or comments? If none, please vote. I didn't see the result of the vote. I presume it was seven zero? Donna? I didn't see the result of the vote. Was, was it seven zero?
Yes, it was.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, next item is the 6.2 Discussion of June Board Meeting Dates.
Yeah, you have the
I'm sorry, can you go, is there something you can do to go in and says it's not approved reviewing because the superintendent has not signed it?
Uh, Donna?
I'm working on that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, the issue here is that the election is, uh, June 2nd and we're hearing that's going to be a go. And you have 10 calendar days to certify the election results. And sometimes that causes you to move meetings up. Uh, it can be done in a special meeting. You know, if we move meetings, if we move your meeting up to the 10th of June to, to get within that window of the 10 days, that puts some pressure on the Business Department, uh, to get things ready in time. Normally in June, you approve the, um, the, the budget. And, uh, that's pretty early in the month and, and quite frankly, Wayne's needs as much time as possible to, uh, to get as solid a numbers as he can before he presents that budget to you. So the only thing that, you're very flexible here, other than that we have to certify the election results before Friday, June 12th, or by Friday, June 12th.
So the question, oh, I was gonna say, so the question is, do we want to make a full meeting on the 10th? And do a budget, a, a special meeting for the budget later in the month? I think pushing it to the, pushing the budget talks to the 10th is going to be too soon.
So if I hear you correctly, you can have your regular meeting on the 10th, you can reorganize, certify the election, and then have a budget meeting later in the month to approve the budget. Yeah, that's an option. Still, still keeps you down to two meetings in the month.
Uh, Dr. Schutz, do you, do you presume, uh, a lot of personnel actions going on in June?
Uh, it will likely have quieted down. It's not been that active of a spring comparatively up to this point in time. So, um, should have fewer next month than we did this month. And we will this month.
Well, as I indicated in an email to Sarah and Dr. Schutz and perhaps Wayne earlier today when this issue was raised, that I remember back in 2015, for some reason, the budget was delayed. It may have been a state legislature issue. And we approved the budget on a meeting, telephonic meeting last day or so of June. It was a, uh, it was a quorum and Greg may have been involved in that. Uh, but, uh, so I think the only requirement is that one has to approve the budget before the beginning of the new fiscal year. So I personally don't see a need to, to rush the budget. It's a living document, it's, it's changing all the time. And so from my point of view, I don't really see a need to get the budget approved at a special meeting early in the year, I, I mean, at the reorganization or even the, the regular meeting. So I think I would set that aside in terms of when you approve the budget. Then make a determination of, do you want to have your reorganization meeting on the 12th? And then follow that with a regular meeting? Or do you want to have your reorganization meeting on the 12th? Solely reorganization meeting? And then you have your, your standard regular meeting on the 17th, five days later. To me, that's what I see the decision is.
I think to, and it's obviously, uh, the Board's pleasure, but to avoid having three separate meetings in that month, I think kind of what I heard Sarah saying, um, I think kind of what I heard Sarah saying, um, moving your June meeting up a week to June 10th, and then having your traditional business meeting, uh, then with the reorganization uh, at that time, and then set an additional meeting later in the month for your budget approval would make sense to me. If you did move your June meeting, I believe that would require board action because you have previously acted on your board meetings for the fiscal year. Uh, and this would be a change to your schedule. So I would think you would want to take board action if you decided to go that route to move your meeting from the 17th to the 10th.
Well, what, what does the board think? Get your calendars out. What do you think?
I think, uh, the reorganization meeting on the 10th sounds good. I would do the budget on the 24th.
Yes, Lynn, that's what I think also. I have nothing on my calendar until September. Both days work for me.
And that gives them time to get the budget up.
I have no personal preference in this one.
Yeah, I'm fine with those.
Can I ask a question? Is it at the budget workshop that any, any changes to the salary schedule would be adopted? And the reason I ask that question is we typically wait until immediately following that meeting to issue our letters of intent or at wills to our support staff members. So anyone who is non-contracted. So the later we do that, the later that occurs, the later those are issued, and some of those people's agreements begin on July 1st.
Well, I think you could do those at either meeting, couldn't you? At the June 10th or the June 24th meeting?
Are you saying we can pull that out of the budget and vote on it early? The part of the budget where it talks about the increases for the support?
Well, you will have you will have a presentation in May from your, um, from the teachers, the teachers group. And they will talk with you about salaries and benefits like they do on an annual basis. I don't think that they'll have, you know, many strong recommendations. They're not going to ask for anything more than rolling the salary schedule. And so, um, you know, at your I'm just trying to think through this out loud. So, so actually at the normal June board meeting, we, um, approve the budget, which approves the salary schedules. It's all in one motion, right? So you are saying that when the budget is approved is when we are given the authority to move forward with the rest of that paperwork to issue. Okay. Okay.
But, but, but much to Sarah's point, do they have to be linked? Could you approve the budget or could you approve the salary schedule without approving the budget? And then later in the month, when you get the rest, the details of the budget put together, which includes that salary schedule you have approved, which is a huge part of the budget. And then you can prove the budget then.
Well, like never before, we are on the same page with our staff in that no one expects anything more than rolling the salary schedule. And no one is objecting. Um, so you know, that would be the only wrench in the system is if that were the plan and then come May 20th, you know, there's this big discussion from the teachers and the, you know, they want this, that, and the other thing. And we feel the need to, you know, make some adjustments, but, uh, little chance of that this year. So long answer to a short question, yes, I believe we, we could do those independently.
So 10th, 24th would work.
Wayne, you have concerns or input here? This, this would be a natural chain of events, he's saying, so.
Yeah, I, I think it actually flowed pretty well. So what, well, we could, uh, we could have the salary benefits committee presentation at the May 17th meeting. Following that, then we could take that information and come up with recommendations that would be approved as a salary benefits, uh, compensation component at the June 10th meeting. And then that is ultimately baked into the budget that would be approved at the June 24th meeting. So it'd kind of be a natural progression of steps.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And it provides then the earlier decision that Ash is looking for in order to get the letters, contracts out to people. Is that correct?
It'd actually be a week earlier than originally projected.
So one positive out of this whole mess.
So what I hear is, uh, the chair entertained a motion to have a reorganization meeting and a regular meeting on June 10th. And then have a meeting to approve the FY 2021 budget on June 24th.
I make a motion that we move the reorg and regular meeting to June 10th for the Board of Education, and then June 24th will be our budget meeting.
I second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we have a reorganization meeting and regular meeting on June 10th and a budget approval meeting on June 24th. Any further questions or comments? Donna, can we vote on this? Via the school board, like our school board, or is it locked up? Here we go. I can vote. Motion carried seven zero. Uh, next item, 7.1 Presentation of Current FY 20 Budget and FY 21 Budget Projections.
Wayne.
Okay, if you'll bear with me just a second, I'm not, uh, okay, are, are you seeing? Are you seeing my full screen for the budget workshop slides?
No.
No.
Okay. Let me. What about that?
But they were in our packet, Wayne, if we, everybody wants to open them.
Okay. Are you seeing, are you seeing the budget presentation?
No, we're just seeing the gallery still.
Are you heading for present now?
Uh huh. Yeah, because that's what I'm seeing on my screen.
Michelle, can you show it? Oh, wait, Robert's in there.
Are you seeing it now? Hello?
No. Uh, here it comes. Michelle Cradefil.
You want me to try to share it? I can share it. Where's Stan Michelle's?
Okay, well, I'm not, uh, oh, choose what you want to share. Okay, hold on here.
Now you're presenting.
Sorry, guys. Are we there?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want me to stop sharing?
Probably.
Probably.
All right.
So if, so I'm there on the main slide. So welcome to the Smithfield Board of Education Financial Workshop. Just to make sure I went to the second slide. Did it move to the second slide?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. So I'm going to get going and then I'll, uh, answer any questions that you have. I'm not going to go through every single slide this evening, but I am going to try to highlight a few things. So the very first portion of tonight's presentation is talking about the current FY 20 or the current 1920 school year budget. So when you approved, uh, the preliminary budget for FY 20, which is the current year back in June of last year, we were showing or anticipating a surplus of, of about $55,000 in, uh, Fund One, Fund Two, and Fund Three, which it was great, great news at the time, particularly because we were coming off FY 19 with a projected almost, uh, a $700,000 deficit. So, so that was a very, very significant turnaround, and I applaud the board for the restructuring, uh, that they went through to get us to that point. Right now, after, um, basically about nine months of, of operations, I'm currently projecting that we'll end FY 20 with a deficit of $90,000. So we started with projecting a surplus of about 55, and I anticipate a deficit of about 90. So we're still pretty close. Uh, we're, we're running a little over in excess of $32 million budget. One question that you may have is, well, Wayne, why, why did we go from 55 plus to now 90 down? Well, there's a lot of ebb and flow within the budget. Uh, there's still some items that have not transpired. For example, we've got some payments out there, payment requests coming in from like early childhood, some excessive cost, uh, high need fund, and some other things that we haven't received yet. So I, I've been very conservative on those, uh, revenue estimates. Uh, they still could come in by June 30th, but because of the way the state of Missouri is functioning right now and in the different departments, I don't feel 100% assurance that we're going to get those funds by, uh, June 30th. So I haven't included some of those funds in there. So that number is still a little fluid. You know, we still have roughly 25% of the year to go as far as a payroll standpoint is concerned, because we still haven't ran May, June, July, or August payroll, uh, which is a very known and fixed cost. But again, it's still a significant portion of the budget that's still to run. As far as state withholdings and COVID, we'll talk more about this in just a little bit, but in the current budget, I think the, the impact will be fairly minimal in the current year budget. There's, there are some, uh, COVID relief funds that are, that have been infused into the state. We, we are going to see, or we have seen, quite frankly, or anticipate seeing some withholdings as far as transportation is concerned. I think I've drawn down our transportation aid about $20,000 roughly. We get about 200, uh, almost $300,000 in transportation aid, and I've lowered that number down just a little bit because of COVID. Uh, the budget, the governor has, uh, said that there will be some withholdings in transportation. Most of the withholdings though that have occurred currently in the state have been in the form of, of higher ed uh, and, and Medicaid and so on and so forth, and very minimal impact in this current budget for K-12 public education. So again, to recap, this current year, I anticipate, again, just a slight deficit. This is a chart that's showing kind of, um, fund balance information. And as you can see, based on this first column, uh, we started the year with roughly about $4.7 million in the bank on July 1st, which basically would be the same number we had on June 30th. Again, as you can see, based on the different funds, I do show a slight decrease, uh, for Fund One, but I show an actually increase in Fund Two, which is the teacher fund. So that's, that's how it's worked out based on where we placed our revenue sources this year. I show a slight increase in Fund Four, which is our capital improvement account. It's also the count that we're making our lease purchase payments out of right now. And then finally, you can see there that at the end of the year, we'll, we'll end about, uh, $90,000 down. So, you know, we started with a, a budget, uh, reserve ratio of, of 17.1%, 01%. As your, uh, policy DIAA says that you'll be between 21 and 26%. We're not there. Uh, and, and I anticipate, again, because of the slight reduction, that is possible that our budget reserve ratio will actually fall below 17 slightly. I'm projecting 16.6 to 16.8%. And again, I anticipate that that being a worst case scenario, again, if a couple of those revenue sources come in, you know, we, we could stay right there around that 17% number, but I don't anticipate it going up or changing much either direction from where we currently are. This next chart shows just the reserve ratios, um, for, for all the years combined, uh, the last eight years actually, and shows you the trend that we've kind of been in as far as our operating fund balances. So some of the factors that are affecting, uh, the Smithfield School District as far as revenue goes, quite frankly, probably one of the biggest, about 38% of our funds come from the state of Missouri. And that's all based on the foundation formula and the state adequacy target. Right now, we are getting about $4,521 per full-time attended student. So if a student ever misses one single minute of the school, uh, in, in a given school year defined in the calendar, we get about $4,521, uh, for that particular child. You can see there what enrollment increases have done and haven't done actually, uh, for, for the Smithfield School District over the past four years. Next year, I am projecting we will gain three students, uh, from where we are currently. This year, we were at 2,647. So, so again, I'm projecting that next year will be at 2,650, and we'll talk about that in just a second. The second biggest factor affecting, uh, revenue for the Smithfield School District is assessed valuation. Earlier tonight, we talked about, uh, you know, our projections of 3% on, on an average, uh, basis for, uh, bond indebtedness. Uh, next year, I am building actually a 3% uh, increase into the district for assessed valuation. This past year, we actually had 9.25% increase in assessed valuation, which is great, but because of the Hancock Amendment, that is limited to the Consumer Price Index. Next year, the Consumer Price Index is actually 2.3%. So next year is a non-reassessment year. Uh, I don't typically, historically, our assessed valuation doesn't fluctuate a lot during a non-reassessment year. So my 3% is probably a pretty realistic number, uh, based on historical trends, and I feel really good about that 3%. So in summary, the current school year closes on June 30th, and we will have a recommendation to you on the current, or a revision actually, to the current FY 20 budget at your June 24th Budget Workshop, uh, meeting. And it will, uh, again, I, I anticipate that we will be in good shape in, for FY 20, particularly as we were comparing, uh, to FY 19, and as we are potentially going to compare here in just a second to FY 21. So FY, uh, 20 is, is, is a good budget year, and I feel really good about the work that, uh, that we have done to get to this place. So real quick, uh, before I go on, does the board have any questions about the current FY 20 budget? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to talk about FY 21 just briefly. So FY21, uh, basically starts with a framework of the previous year's budget. So we're, we're starting, uh, basically $90,000 in the hole, uh, is where I started building FY21. So I had to take FY21, or FY20, excuse me, and move it into FY21, so it just doesn't start at zero again. We have to continue to carry those, those numbers with us. So, uh, just to recap, uh, where does the district's revenues come from? Well, again, about 38% of our money comes from the state of Missouri, and again, that's based on seat time, student attendance. We get about 3% of our money from the federal government. Most of these are title programs, allocations, uh, for, for special education, uh, and, and various title programs related to, to the federal government that are mandated. We get about 56% of our, uh, money from the local, uh, assessed valuation, based on real and personal property, and we get about 3% of our funds from the county. This is a breakdown of where those different sources and how much funds they actually generate. You can see in all four funds, which includes the 10 Fund, 20 Fund, 30 Fund, which is the Restricted Debt Service Fund, and the 40 Fund next year, we'll get about $33.2 million is, is what I estimate that, uh, we will actually generate in revenue for all four funds. As you can see, I've put a number up here that I'm estimating right now that we will receive about $750,000 of additional revenue in FY21 that we did not have in FY20. $750,000 for all four funds. Not all of that is accessible. Part of that is restricted funds. But again, I put a caveat, and I will say this several times this evening, but we are still very uncertain of the effects of the COVID-19 coronavirus and, and its impact on the FY21 budget. I'll reference that in just a second, but, uh, we, school business officials are talking all over, and I've got a conference call with a bunch of them tomorrow. Um, there's still just a lot of uncertainty out there. Uh, I have built the budget, and I will provide caveats on some assumptions, but I am still assuming right now, based on the assumptions that we made, that we'll have about $750,000 of additional revenue. So where is that revenue all coming from? Well, several different places. Uh, next year, we, I, I am anticipating a decrease in interest income. Uh, this past year, you refinanced, or actually took money out of escrow account that we were drawing some interest on, on a 2010, uh, general obligation bond that we refinanced in 2017. Since 2017, we've actually been holding in an escrow account about $5.2 million. That $5.2 million has been generating some, uh, interest for our debt service account. Uh, that, because of the 10-year, uh, call date, has actually dropped off the book. So I anticipate next year that we will actually receive less in interest income next year than we got this year. The next item that I have down there is Prop C. Uh, Proposition C was a tax that was passed statewide based on sales tax. Well, I, I put in here that, uh, currently, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is estimating $1,065 per ADA for Prop C. Um, I'm using a more conservative number of, uh, $1,036 for Prop C. Uh, it potentially could be as low as $1,016, though, per ADA, uh, for Prop C. Uh, there's even some gloom and doom people that are saying it'll be below $1,000, because it's all based on sales tax. I just received some information from the state of Missouri that actually, to date, knowing that the COVID, uh, shutdown is about 48 days old, but to date, uh, this, actually, sales tax in the state of Missouri is up 3.05%. Which is really great news when you talk about Prop C. People are scratching their heads. Uh, apparently, even though people are quarantined at home and businesses are shut down, people are still making purchases, and those purchases are still generating sales tax revenue. So I'm not as worried about Prop C maybe as some. The thing that I'm worried about the most, and we'll talk about this a little bit, is just overall state revenue. Uh, state revenue for the year is down about 2.77%. Uh, that is why the governor's actually come out and, and charged the General Assembly, who's working on the budget, which has to be approved by May 8th, um, to basically carve out $700 million out of the state's budget for next year, 700 million. Uh, most, again, of that, uh, is not coming out of K-12 education. I think right now, in the House version that just passed this past week, there was just $2.2 million taken out for next year for K-12 public education. Again, a lot of other, uh, programs are, are feeling that. But for the month of March, no, excuse me, for the month of April, for the month of April, the state saw a 49.96% reduction, almost a 50% reduction in, in revenue as compared to previous Aprils. And, and you might wonder, well, why did they have a 50% reduction? Well, two reasons. One is, is very obvious, and that is because of COVID-19 and the fact that the people just weren't, uh, working and generating, uh, maybe a lot of unemployment and, and weren't generating a lot of, uh, tax, uh, based on wages. But probably more importantly, if you recall, there was a decision made to postpone the due date for people's income taxes. And instead of it being on April 15th, and everybody making that big payment to the state of Missouri, that's been pushed back now to the summer. And as a result, uh, that's why the state has seen such a huge, huge decrease in, in revenue at the state of Missouri is because people didn't, weren't required to pay their income taxes at, on the normal date. I'm optimistic that, uh, folks will catch up, uh, or most folks will catch up, uh, over the summer. So, uh, we, we will see how that plays out. So this is just a chart showing you basically briefly the, uh, amount of Prop C, which is again, based on sales tax, uh, that we have gotten over the past several years. Uh, I'm anticipating basically, uh, just a slight increase, uh, next year in Prop C money. Uh, the reason is because I'm showing actually a slight increase of 13 ADA later in the budget. So that's, that's why I actually show a slight increase. But again, I put on here, COVID-19 may impact this. This is just a little chart showing you interest income. Again, I think that'll be down slightly. Uh, I've taken a little bit of income out there as far as interest income, simply because, again, we paid that, uh, that big note off that we were holding in escrow for, for debt service. This is assessed valuation. Again, we've talked about that. I'm at just anticipating 3%. This is just a, um, just a reminder, uh, for lack of a better word, that, uh, how our assessed valuation works in the school district. Again, agricultural property is assessed at, uh, 12% of its actual value per $100. Residential property at 19%, commercial property at 32%, and personal property at 33 and a third percent. So that, that's kind of how that works as far as generating those kind of, of dollars. Increases in assessed valuation, as you can see, uh, I'm using a 3% increase. Every 1% generates a little over $100,000, uh, and, and it grows, uh, at 3%. Again, I'm, I'm suggesting about 361,000, just from assessed valuation. If you can recall, I said overall, we were generating about 750,000 of additional revenue. Well, again, roughly 360 is coming from increases in assessed valuation. So I've talked about that. Uh, you've seen this chart before. These are area tax levies. Uh, again, Smithville is at $5.10 for the current year. Uh, this is the average, uh, expenditure per pupil. You can see that Smithville has made some gains in this, uh, department. We used to be a, at the bottom, uh, which was not where we wanted to be by any means. Uh, it, it shows our fiscal responsibility and how frugal we are with the dollars that we do have. But again, I've always argued that our kids deserve those same opportunities as other kids, uh, whether it be the, the amount of teacher compensation, uh, per teacher, whether it be the amount of, uh, resources they have available in the classroom. And again, you can see that we are still almost $1,000 per child below the state average. But where do all these expenditures go? This is, uh, representation of the current FY, uh, 21 budget, and again, uh, about $33.2 million is, is, uh, where I see the potential expenditures. You can see about, uh, a little over 12%. Uh, almost 13% is actually going to pay off debt. Uh, but again, the biggest, uh, amount, uh, of any budget, which is about 76% of an overall budget in the Smithville School District is paid, uh, related to paying personnel, salary, and benefits. So 76% of our budget is, is, is people. And this is kind of a breakdown of, of what that goes to be. You can see, for example, expenses, the, the 2550, uh, budget code is related to transportation, about $1.6 million next year, related to all costs associated with transportation. Um, I think I've got, yeah, food services in here, about 1.2 million. So, so those are how all those costs potentially break down, uh, for, for next year. This is a little graph showing an illustration of kind of expected, uh, revenues and expenses trends over time. Uh, you can see in the 17, 18 school year, the green, uh, line is our expenses. That was a construction year. Please note that this includes all four funds, not just Funds One and Two typically associated with, uh, operation and teacher funds. This is all four funds. And these three years, 17, 18, 18, 19, and ultimately 19, 20, we had some run-out funds. That's why those expenditure lines are all actually greater than the revenue lines. Um, so I just wanted to point, point that out to you. Uh, next year, again, we expect revenue and expenditures to be, uh, very similar, because again, we are not anticipating any influx with, uh, construction dollars. This is talking a little bit about, uh, the state adequacy target. Uh, right now, the state law mandates, or mandates this year, that the state adequacy target be, uh, 6375. That is the amount of expenditures per pupil that the state of Missouri, uh, believes to be adequate to fund, um, an education. If you recall, our, our, uh, expenditures and, and everybody, the state average actually is, is well in excess of that, but, uh, 6375 is the state adequacy target. I anticipate that, uh, with next year's budget, I think it will too be at 6375. And that's what I've, uh, baked into, to next year's, uh, budget. I talked about an increase in enrollment. I said that we're gonna increase three students for next year. Um, I've used the cohort enrollment projections, and I've used that data to come up with that, uh, information. Right now, I am anticipating or building at 180 kindergarteners for next year. Currently, um, when we started building this, uh, presentation, we were only around 140 kindergarteners, so I commend, uh, the principals to get the word out. But, uh, as of today, we were actually at 167 kindergarteners. So based on historical trends and so on and so forth, I do believe we'll hit that 180 number. Um, the 167 is for kindergarten screening. Uh, again, most of that, uh, type of enrollment and, and screening information occurs in the month of April and, and May, but because of the COVID outage, uh, we, our folks haven't been able to do those face-to-face kind of, uh, orientations. So our numbers are down a little bit, but I do project those things to go up. And that's a breakdown of where those folks are. I will, uh, share with you guys, uh, that currently we have 10 sections of kindergarten. Um, next year, as we speak, uh, we've only included nine sections of kindergarten in the budget. So that is something that we're continuing to watch. So back to my point about gaining three students, uh, please keep in mind that we are graduating, uh, roughly 230 seniors. And I project us bringing in 180 kindergarteners. So right there, uh, if, if no one moves into the district and no one moves out of the district, you know, you can see that our enrollment will actually decline by 50 students, uh, just doing that simple math. Uh, but again, I'm projecting not only, uh, will we get 180 kindergarteners, I'm projecting that we're gonna get 100, uh, roughly 53, uh, additional move-ins to, to the school district. So if you take, um, those additional students, uh, you know, I'm estimating about 2.7 additional ADA from students. And then for summer school, I'm also estimating about a 10% increase in summer school. And to be honest with you, as we get a little later in the presentation, this is a big if, as we speak, as related to COVID-19. And it's, uh, has, quite frankly, a huge impact on the budget. Uh, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit, too, but, but I am estimating a slight increase in, in summer school attendance as we speak. And then again, this assumes that COVID does not impact summer school. So again, with, uh, roughly 13 ADA, I'm estimating about $60,000, uh, for additional kids. Uh, you can see there, a chart kind of illustrating what, what, you know, additional kids represent as far as increases in, in, uh, in revenue. Um, you know, if we were to get, you know, back in the day, we were picking up, you know, 90 to 100 kids each year, district-wide, you can see what kind of numbers that generated. Um, you know, but you can also see what no enrollment increases, uh, generates. Next year, uh, I've also, uh, baked into the preliminary budget, uh, information regarding our, uh, supplies, uh, whether it be technology, or textbooks, or building equipment, uh, I've built in the same uh, allocation per student, with the exception of technology and, and, uh, technology supplies and technology equipment. I've actually increased that slightly, but everything else is pretty much, uh, remaining the same. So, you know, one question someone may have is, well, how do you come up with how much to budget for supplies? Or how much you allocate, uh, for textbooks or computers? Well, well, here it is. It's actually pretty simple. Uh, you, you have a per pupil allocation, and it simply fluctuates based on that building's enrollment. And, and those allocations are based on, uh, need and, uh, input and historical trends. This is a copy of the current year's salary schedule. Uh, again, we talked about, uh, this potentially being, uh, approved at your, uh, June 10th meeting, uh, to June 10th board meeting. But as you can see, uh, we refer to our base as, uh, Column E10, which is the Masters in 10. And right now, our current base, uh, at Masters in 10 is, uh, $47,500. That actually increased $360 last year. This is the chart, uh, you've seen before, and it was included in your packet, but, uh, you know, this is how our different uh, benchmarks, uh, qualify or rank against the 25 area schools in, in the Kent City metro. Uh, again, one of the, uh, previous CSIP goals was to be in the top 10, uh, in, in all categories. Um, you know, and, and it shows the rank there as compared to the 25 area metro schools. While that was not specifically included in the most current CSIP, in my opinion, it still needs to remain a goal of the Board of Education to work towards that. And you can see, based on the current school year, uh, where we are in, in that, uh, in that field as far as those different, uh, areas. And then this is, uh, more specific, uh, to our, our peer group in the Northland and, uh, out of the, uh, six school districts in the different categories, uh, and where we fall as far as the ranking goes, as we compare to our peers in the Northland. This chart is an illustration showing the average salary increases over the past, uh, several years. Again, last year, you can see that, uh, it was about a 2.44%, which included an additional $360 to the base. It also included rolling the salary schedule. And the preliminary FY21 budget, it actually works out, without adding any money to the base, it actually works out to be a 1.99% salary compensation increase, uh, by rolling the certified, non-certified schedule and administrators on the administrator's schedule, 1.99%. by rolling the certified, non-certified schedule and administrators on the administrator's schedule, one point nine nine percent. This next chart is a chart that we've included before to for you just for comparative purposes. And actually, we can change these numbers to to virtually anything. But it is relates to that CSIP goal that was previously mentioned. And then where we rank currently and what potential dollars infused into the salary schedule for the certified staff and its impact on those different benchmarks. For example, if a thousand dollars was added to the salary schedule, I estimate for the certified staff, that cost to be about two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. And you can see that even with a thousand dollars added to every single step, we would not be in the top ten in all categories. Quite frankly, we'd be only in the top ten in two of the six categories that you have typically measured yourself against. So referencing the FY twenty one budget, currently, I'll tell you or share with you what I've included in the FY twenty one budget. And again, this is in a preliminary place. So this is going to change and will change on your input because it's your budget, not my budget. But the current FY one twenty one budget does include almost a hundred thousand dollars of attrition savings. And what I mean by attrition savings, that was savings that was realized from positions that were not being filled from ESIP and from people that have left the district and new people have been hired. This number will continue to fluctuate. You took some action this evening, actually, that will continue to change this number. But to date, through attrition, we have saved almost a hundred thousand dollars from FY twenty to FY twenty one. Benefits, actually, back at your March board meeting, you approved maintaining a hundred percent board paid benefits. As a result, we had to change the the base of the medical benefit package from five hundred and thirty dollars per member per month to five hundred and ninety dollars per member per month. Making that change actually cost an additional two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I've included that into to the budget. We talked about rolling the schedule. I have included in in next year's budget, rolling both the certified and non-certified staff and the administrators based on the administrator's schedule. And I believe or estimate that cost based on the staff that we have in the FY twenty one budget to be three hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to 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 make those changes. I've also included in FY twenty one budget about a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars of additional FTE that were not employed or were not even positions in the FY twenty budget. So about a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. This is positions such as the playground lunch room aids, positions such as a additional teacher at the high school to teach family consumer science, personal finance, and other courses as assigned. The budget also includes about thirty nine thousand dollars for central office restructuring. Again, we've talked about this multiple times, and I've baked this into the budget. The budget also includes about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of positions that we are not filling that were in the FY twenty budget that are not included in the FY twenty one budget. We've talked about these positions multiple times, but these positions include such as two assistant elementary principal positions, a middle school part time math position. I'm gonna probably forget some positions, but three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It also includes about sixty six thousand dollars for ESIP payments that you approved during this year. So the the total new spend, if you add all the additions and subtractions away, I estimate for personnel related items that were previously mentioned about three hundred and sixty two thousand dollars of additional spend that have been included into the current FY twenty one budget. Also included in the FY twenty one budget is summer school, summer school expenses. And I've actually had to double the summer school expenses, and and I will explain why and just so you understand. Currently, summer school is held in the month of June. Well, because of the COVID outage, we're not going to be able to have summer school in June as we traditionally know it, a face to face summer school. Summer school, when you include transportation and staff and supplies and so on and so forth, the cost is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Well, in next year's budget, I still have budgeted summer school for the month of June in the year twenty one. But I also had to include summer school costs, assuming we do summer school in July for July of twenty. So you have double summer school cost in FY twenty one budget. And that has escalated or accelerated the potential impact, and I'll show you that in just a second. We'll talk about that in just a second. I've included sixty five thousand dollars of an allowance for a state audit in the FY twenty one budget. In my opinion, that is a conservative number, but I felt that it would be prudent to to include that. We talked about the kindergarteners I've included. We talked about the enrollment. We've talked about the assess valuation. What I have not included, as we speak, into the FY twenty one budget, I have not included any Corona Act recovery funds, sometimes referred to as the Care Funds supplemental funding. It's still unknown. We, quite frankly, have no good information, and information changes daily, but we have no solid information on actual dollars that we are going to receive as a result of supplemental funding for coronavirus. All we know is that this year, we anticipate there being some funding in FY twenty that will keep us from going down, with the exception of transportation. But what we don't know is what, if any, there will be for next year. I talked about earlier that I talked about Prop C, which was the sales tax. You know, if sales tax tanks, will there be federal money to prop that up? Classroom trust fund, which is based on gaming. Well, the casinos have been closed for forty eight days. Will the casinos come back online? I actually think some of them are starting to come back online. But will gaming recover as quickly? I know that they were still doing the scratch off stuff. So there were still some dollars being generated during COVID, but I think a majority of that is based on on going to the boats. And and the boats just haven't been open, so I'm not sure what that looks like for sure for next year. Quite frankly, no one does at this point. And and the state advocacy target, you know, will the state advocacy target still be sixty three seventy five? Again, I'm not sure that anybody actually knows. So so those things are really not included, and we have no way of really including those items in the budget. Another item that's not included in the budget and until August fourth happens, in my opinion, we cannot include it in the budget, is the potential impact of the second question for the August fourth election. Should that question be approved by the voters? Again, it just requires a simple majority to transfer ten cents from our debt service to our operational levy fund one for no net change in the in the overall levy. I estimate that to generate about two hundred and fifty thousand. That two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will have a significant positive impact on next year's budget. I've not included any increase in the certified salary schedule. Again, the Salary and Benefits Committee for both certified and non-certified have not made recommendations. I'm not sure what those things will look like. We've rolled the schedule. We've paid and maintained a hundred percent board paid benefits, but we've not made any changes to the salary schedule. So I've not included any of those in the preliminary budget unless you provide direction otherwise for both certified and non-certified. I've not included any of the restructuring for the HR position at central office into the working budget as we speak. We anticipate there some potential savings, but I've not included those in the FY twenty one working budget yet. And again, I will say this one more time. You'll be tired of me saying this, but we still don't know what, if any, impact there will be related to the coronavirus and economic downturn in the state. With all that said, I think I'm estimating five hundred and sixteen thousand dollar deficit for next year. Again, please keep in mind that that does show double summer school. So that number is been propped up by roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Should we have, you know, traditional summer school as we have in the past? If we have a non-traditional summer school in July, it's potential that those costs will come down significantly. And part of that may be mandated by restrictions placed related to the reentry plan that the county and the state of Missouri has in place. For example, we may not be able to provide transportation for summer school because we can't put all the kids on the bus. Well, if we don't provide transportation for summer school, you know, that takes off sixty thousand dollars. The unintended consequence is we may not have as much attendance if we don't provide transportation. Well, if we don't have as much attendance, we won't need as many staff. If we don't need as many staff, we won't have two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of expenses for summer school. But until July gets here, we just don't know what that'll look like. But again, I baked it in. So all that said, I'm anticipating about a five hundred and sixteen thousand dollar deficit for next year. So with all that said, and this has not been updated since your earlier action tonight, but we will have the revised FY twenty and the preliminary FY twenty one budget for your June twenty fourth workshop. So I went extremely fast, and I hopefully explained things well enough, but if you have questions, I would love to answer any.
Hey, Wayne, this is Denny. One thing that kept coming to me when you were talking about doubling up next year's summer school numbers. What about the dollars that were budgeted for this year's? I mean, we're going to end up ninety thousand dollar deficit. Had we had summer school in June, would that have been, for instance, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar deficit?
Denny, you get a gold star. You get a gold star, Denny. You are correct. You were following along. So you are correct. So those expenditures that were originally allocated for for the FY twenty budget were taken out. And had they been there, you are correct, that ninety thousand dollar deficit would have potentially been accelerated and taken us over three hundred thousand. We received the revenue this year for summer school. We had a sixty eight ADA. So if you just do the real quick math, twenty five forty one times. We we received a little over four hundred thousand dollars for revenue this year for summer school. We will potentially receive that in in excess next year. But again, we'll have that additional expense that won't be offset.
So Wayne, my other question, so how does the two ballot issues being presented, what is it? What's that impact reflect down the road on the budget?
Well, the first question for the general obligation has no. Well, it's not reflected in that five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars because those are restricted funds. And that five hundred and sixteen thousand is basically funds one, two, and four. So it does not, that will not move that needle. What it will do is if question two is approved, it will bring that number down roughly two hundred and fifty two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional revenue will be generated without additional cost. So so it'll be a very positive impact if that issue is successful. When that issue is successful in August, it'll have a very, very positive impact on the budget.
So are we mandated to offer summer school for this year?
Only for students with special needs that have it in their IEP as in as a extended school year. But for all regular students, general population, we are not required.
Yeah, this double ding for summer school is not a not a done deal, as Wayne, excuse me, indicated previously. You know, we need a lot more information before we determine what and how we would do summer school. But I think it's very telling in that five hundred and sixteen thousand dollar number with it indicating a double ding for summer school. If there were just one summer school in there, and then the question two passed, would basically be at a wash then for FY twenty one, which kind of tells me just how close we are.
Wayne, I think we would probably see a bigger impact on the twenty one twenty two budget with the the bond issue, the first issue because of the completion of Eagle Heights and adding staff at Eagle Heights. Would you agree?
Yes, you know, as as we continue to grow, it's going to require students. And and I would like to believe that as we add students, we add additional revenue through the ADA. So we will have to hire additional staff, you are correct, and it will be in twenty twenty one when that building opens. We are keeping our fingers crossed that we have additional students, therefore, the the need is there. If we have no additional students and we will not have to require any hiring additional staff because it's all in debt service, it will not impact the budget. So unlike when we did Eagle Heights the first time, we did it as a lease purchase, and those were not restricted costs, and those are all reflected in the budget. So it's a little different scenario that we had back in two thousand seventeen when when we opened Eagle Heights. But you're right, more staff equates more cost. More students hopefully generates more revenue. Again, it's a very, very fluid document. I didn't go into any detail, but, you know, late last week, we had some meetings with the county of Clay. You may have seen this being discussed on the news about some Corona relief and and a vote that was taken by the county commissioners. And some displeasure with how all that went down. Ultimately, there was some money, there is money, quite frankly, for the Smithfield School District in that resolution that the county commissioners approved last Friday. I'm not sure if we'll see any of it. But there was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Smithfield School District that was in included in that relief act that the county commissioners approved last Friday.
You might want to, I might want to take a look. I saw something come through during the meeting that said Clay County's paperwork was not submitted correctly. So whether you believe everything you read, there may be some issues there as well.
I have not included any of that money in the budget.
Yeah, to Denny's point, Channel Nine reported tonight that Clay County's twenty nine point three million in COVID nineteen stimulus aid now in question. So we'll see what happens there.
Our great county government.
I can't think of any questions I have on the proposed budget at, at this time, but I do have a question on the bigger picture, which is I don't see us hitting that target under DIAA within the timeframe because of COVID. Uh, would you, would you disagree, Wayne, if we made some projections?
I agree. Uh, you're not going to hit your timeframe, uh, per policy. And if you would allow us, uh, maybe to work with our policy editor to potentially make a, uh, a softer landing, so to speak, uh, regarding that policy to give yourselves a little bit more wiggle room. Not to say that we can't get there and we shouldn't strive to get there, but to potentially open the window a little bit so we don't, uh, by policy, uh, back ourselves in a corner.
Oh, correct. I know. And I don't know whether we need to change the policy or whether we simply need to have a board resolution setting aside the policy temporarily because of the current situation. I don't know how to fully address it, but I think in some fashion we need to address it versus just ignoring it. So perhaps that's something that you work with MVA in terms of, uh, legal counsels, which is the best way? Change policy or some sort of resolution to recognize that we're not going to make it because of the extenuating circumstances.
Actually, I think MSBA is recommending a resolution, uh, rega- regarding, uh, the, uh, temporary stay on policy as related to COVID and they actually sent a sample out today that I read. So I, I can get that to Dr. Schutz and we can talk about that as a cabinet. There's going to be a lot of people in, in tough shape.
And perhaps we can add that to the agenda for the next board meeting. Any other questions or comments on the budget workshop presentation?
It was very thorough. I just wanted to say I, I think I understood it a little more this year than I did last year. So maybe next year.
Anything else on it? Then if nothing else, then, uh, we will move on then, I guess. Uh, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Before we do adjournment, I would like to, uh, interject, uh, we had a Carverning School District, uh, board meeting, uh, last Friday. And one of the things that our, our lobbyist told us is that one would expect that in this time of crisis that the state legislature would be doing only that which is absolutely necessary, which is passing a budget. But what they're seeing is a lot of bill writing, ominous bill writing that a lot of things are being thrown into these bills that all sides of the education, uh, people are saying, we don't see what's going on. This is, uh, this is a lot of legislative thing in the dark. And so what I would recommend or what I suggest, uh, at your discretion, of course, is to call your state representative and say all we need is to have the budget passed. That's all we need right now. We don't need to have bills that have all sorts of mandates and other things that people are trying to squeeze through in this time of crisis. Because as it now stands, they can't have typical meetings to, uh, discuss what's going on. So, uh, just a little soapbox on my account. So if you wouldn't mind calling your state representative and saying, all we need to have done at the state level is pass the budget. Everything else right now, all these other bills, these ominous bills that have all sorts of, uh, things in them. Let's not do that. That is not good governance. Anything else?
Good job, Wayne.
Yes, very good.
Thanks again, Wayne.
Well, uh, if nothing else, then the chair entertain a motion to adjourn the session.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It has moved, it ha- it has been moved and second that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please vote.
Is, is Lynn always the one that makes the motion to adjourn the meeting?
I don't know. Could be his dog now.
One second, actually, I clicked out of it. Sorry, guys. Making you stay late.
Todd, you keep touching your face. Don't touch your face.
Yeah. We're starting to require masks around here and that's, that's a hard transition.
We still, there you go. Still waiting for Lynn.
We left.
I think Lynn made the motion and left.
Todd, we, we had a big meeting today at the Med Center about PPE and how are we going to put 10,000 people back in masks to come to work every day?
Yeah.
I pressed the wrong button. There we go.
Good job, Lynn.
So you're okay with supplies or are you, are you needing supplies at the hospital?
No, so from like a first care standpoint, we're pretty, our, our inventory is good. But you have all the academic research, students, faculty, you know, support staff. Just, uh, how do you get all those people back? And a lot of them have to work in close proximity of each other.
And all masks are not free to use.
That's right.
Right, Robert?
Uh, let's see, before we exit, at least I need to talk to Donna. Uh, there, the, uh, resolutions require my signature. Can we just do the electronic signature again?
Wayne, should we check with our bond counsel on that? If we can do electronic signature?
I could, uh, check with them tomorrow. Uh, I know that the information that actually goes to the election commission, uh, just has to be signed by the board secretary. It does not require Russell's signature.
I misread it then, sorry. Then, then that's fine.
But if we need your signature, Russell, we'll get a hold of you.
Okay. All right, uh, I'm done for the evening then. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening. Stay safe.
Bye, everyone.